Good afternoon. The hour of 4:02 has arrived, and I'd like to call the Kane County Committee of the whole meeting of June 22, 2021, to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allen? Bates?
Here.
Berman?
Berman here.
Brown?
Brown here.
Davist?
Davist here.
Thank you. Ford?
Here.
Fraz?
Here.
Igbo?
Igbo present.
Gums?
Gums here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Kayaus?
Kayaus present.
Kopee?
Kopee's present.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Lewis?
Lewis here.
Martin?
Martin present.
Molina?
Molina present.
Sanchez?
Sanchez here.
Sheprow?
Sheprow here.
Silva?
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Sergeus?
Sergeus here.
Tepe?
Tepe here.
Oneiki?
Present.
Jerome?
You have a question?
Wonderful. Fantastic. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Brown?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty or justice for all.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 25, 2021 meeting?
Sheprow moves.
Sheprow moves, seconded by?
Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez. Are there any thoughts or changes, edits? Seeing none online. Clerk, please call the roll.
Allen? Bates?
It's I.
Berman?
Berman yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Davist?
Davist yes.
Ford?
Present.
Fraz?
Yes.
Igbo?
Igbo yes.
Gums?
Gums yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kayaus?
Kayaus.
Kopee?
Kopee.
Leonard?
Leonard yes.
Lewis?
Lewis yes.
Martin?
Martin yes.
Molina?
Molina yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez yes.
Sheprow?
Sheprow yes.
Silva?
Silva yes.
Thank you. Strathman?
Strathman yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus yes.
Tepe?
Tepe yes.
Oneiki?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any public comments? And I see none online. No public comments. All right. Now for the beginning. We're approaching, and I'm so grateful that you're all here. This is going to be a wonderful opportunity for all of us to learn about some pretty important funding that we have come forward. And I want to assure you, as Mr. Sanchez begins his work on chairing the task force, the ARP committee, Task Force Committee, that all of your input is going to be needed, necessary, and wanted. And we even have a volunteer.
Done. It starts.
And it starts. To reach out to your community members and to bring their thoughts and their concerns from your specific communities to this committee for their review and input. But that will be discussed further as we go through the guidance on how this money, this ultimately about approximately $103 million can be effectively spent. I just received the additional guidance that came through, through the Treasury, through NACO, in my inbox today. And I just want to share the very first paragraph with you, which gives a very brief and good summary of where we were and where we're going to be going through to date. On March 11 of this year, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and established the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which together make up the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. This program is intended to provide support to our local county in responding to the economic and public health impacts of COVID-19 and in their efforts to contain impacts on our communities, our residents, and our businesses. So that is what we have to look for on how we spend this $103 million. The money is not ours. It is our county's. It belongs to our constituents. And your 24 ideas and thoughts and concerns are all have to be focused on what is best for our community members, how it's best going to affect them both in the short and long term. This is one-shot funding, and with this money, we can do an awful lot of good. So with that, I'd like to bring up Vince, and he's going to present a PowerPoint. And then after that, Joe Ansick will be presenting the financial impact of what we have to look at as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Vincent Coyle. I'm with the Kane County State Attorney's Office. I just want to go through an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act and the funds or the uses of those funds generally. Go to the next slide. Madam Chair, in her, the paragraph that she read kind of went over this slide. As you heard, you'll be receiving a little over $103 million that will be made in two tranches. The first payment has already been received in the first half. The second half will be made next year, May of 2022. Next slide, please. We could go back. All right. So we can go forward one slide. Looks like we're missing a slide. So the American Rescue Plan Act is broken down into four different categories in which the funding can be used for. The first is to respond to public health emergency regarding COVID-19 or its negative economic impact. The second category is to provide premium pay to eligible workers performing essential work. The third category is recruitment of lost revenue due to the COVID-19 public emergency. And last is investments in water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure. All right. If we could go to... The important dates, as you see on this slide, to keep in mind are the dates of March 3 of 2021 through December 31 of 2024. Those are the expenditures, the time period that you're going to be looking at. But keep in mind that you may have projects that extend past 2024, which is fine, as long as the expenditures are incurred by that December 31, 2024 date. If you can go to the next slide. What can these funds be used for? I went through those four categories. If you could go to the next slide. And those are the ones listed here under the Act. If we can go to the next slide. So the U.S. Department of Treasury has issued some guidance as to what falls under those four categories. And the main guidance that they've issued is the interim final rule. That's pretty much the Bible in regards to what the uses can be or the funds can be used for. Since the interim final rule has come out on May 17 of 2021, the Treasury has updated that with frequently asked questions and answers to those. And then also, as Madam Chair has indicated, the latest guidance came out last Friday, which is compliance and reporting guidance. So those are the three main things that we're looking at in terms of looking how you can use the money from the American Rescue Plan funds. If we can go to the next slide. So I want to take you through those four categories. They are different, and the money can be used in, may be used in one category but not the other. So that first category that I went over was responding to COVID-19 or its negative impact. And it's kind of broken up into two different subcategories here. The first being responding to COVID-19. And as you can tell, there's three areas that the Treasury has indicated in their interim final rule. Mitigation and prevention, pretty much sounds exactly what it is regarding COVID-19. That includes vaccination programs, medical expenses, testing, contract tracing, support for isolation or quarantine, public health surveillance, support for vulnerable populations to access medical or public health services, enhanced public health data systems, and capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operation needs. Then you have behavioral health care, and that deals with mental health issues and substance abuse. The Treasury has indicated that mental health and substance abuse has been impacted greatly by the pandemic. So under this category, that does allow funding to go to those areas of need. And then also in responding to COVID-19 is payroll and benefits. Unlike the CARES Act, there is a little bit of a difference when it comes to using the funds under this act as it did to the CARES Act. And if you could go to the next slide. So the eligible payroll expenses are listed here on this slide. Public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees under that act, different than the coronavirus release fund in that you can use the funds to the extent that the employee's time is dedicated to responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So there is somewhat of a test that the Treasury does give for convenience in that the employee that the funds should be used for would be covered if that employee or their unit or operating unit that they work in is primarily dedicated to responding to the COVID-19. So what does that mean? Then more than half the employee's time is dedicated to the COVID-19 response. So you can use the funds for payroll under this section if it falls under that test. All right. Next slide, please. And then I mentioned the second subpart is responding to negative economic impacts. This is impacted industries. The Treasury has indicated that tourism is down and hospitality. So you can render aid to help safely open up those businesses that deal with travel and hospitality, rebuilding the public sector capacity. The Treasury has indicated that there's been a loss of workforce and things of that nature. So to replenish or get back to the area that you were before the pandemic hit. Small businesses and nonprofits allowed to, under this section, loans and grants to mitigate financial hardships. And that does include counseling with the businesses to help them get what they need to get back to where they were before the pandemic. And then impacted communities. And that includes, as it indicates, job training, internet access. And then really, the Treasury wants to focus on those communities that are hardest hit by the pandemic and educational disparities. Next slide, please. The Treasury does indicate what you can't use the funds for, and that's outlined in this, in each category, they kind of indicate that. So in the first category, you cannot use the funds for general infrastructure unless it's responding to a specific pandemic need. And that's important to note because the Treasury will be watching over this, and failure to comply would be a recruitment of funds by the Treasury. Also, they specifically state in many different sections, not just interim final rule, but also in the frequently asked questions, you cannot use the funds in any way for rainy day funds or financial reserves. That is not allowed by these funds or payments of interest or principal on outstanding debt instruments or settlement agreements. So the Treasury has made it very clear that none of the money can be used for those items, and they've made that clear in multiple different areas. Next slide, please. The second category is premium pay. Premium pay deals with eligible workers performing essential work. And then you could also provide grants to third-party employers who are doing the same thing. So what is essential work? Well, that's work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. And then also, what's eligible workers? Those are your essential workers that are needed to maintain the continuity of operations, right? And then also, those are in certain sectors and any other sectors that the governor has indicated. Those sectors are listed below, and they are the sectors that you probably guess deal with essential work, and that's healthcare, education, childcare, transportation, sanitation, grocery and food, public health, and safety.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Will that be mostly retroactive pay?
So there are some exceptions in the interim final rule, but essentially, the costs that they're looking at start from March 3 of 2021 to December 31 of 2024.
And we're going to limit the questions until after the presentation. You can write notes.
Okay. Next slide, please. Again, this category comes with the don'ts. You cannot use this money for employees who worked telework from their residence. It kind of, they really just want you to focus on those essential workers that are doing work that are hands-on. Next slide, please. Recruitment of revenue. This section allows for the recruitment of revenue losses experienced due to COVID-19 public health emergency. So what the Treasury has done is they came up with a formula to calculate the loss that each county has experienced. Instead of each county going to the Treasury and individually saying how much they've lost in revenue, they came up with this formula, and if it fits under that formula, then those, that money that was lost is considered due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And the uses under this are pretty broad. They need to be used for government services. That's the thing to keep in mind here. And the uses are not an exhaustive list, but some of the examples that they do put in the section are maintenance of infrastructure or pay-go spending for building new infrastructure. That includes roads, modernization of cybersecurity, health services, environmental remediation, school or educational services, and the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. So whatever, there's going to be a certain amount based on this formula of revenue lost. Based on that, whatever that number is, you can use that money under this section for government services, if that makes sense. And if we can go to the next slide. This chart is an illustration that was taken right from the interim final rule that the Treasury has put out. And this just kind of gives you an idea of how that's calculated. So you take four points in time, which is December of 2020, December 2021, '22, '23. And you use June, or I'm sorry, 2019, I believe our fiscal year ends November 30. So keep in mind when that says June 19. This is just for illustration purposes. Use 2019 as your base year, and then calculate a 4.1 increase off of that to determine how much revenue you actually lost. Based on that number is the number that you are capped at using for recruitment of revenue. So whatever that amount is, and I believe Joe Ansick will have a better idea of the numbers for you in his presentation of how much money can be used under Section C or Category C of the Act. If we go to the next slide, please. Some of the don'ts that are outside, again, paying interest or principal on outstanding debt, rainy day funds, reserve funds, settlements, or judgments. So this section, Section C, is going to be your broadest category in use of funds because it's the money that, of revenue that was lost during, that's calculated by the formula that you can use for government services. And the interim final report gives a pretty broad allowance for the use of that, of the funds under this section. If you can go to the next slide, please. And then the last category is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And again, just to note, nowhere in this last section does it talk about general infrastructure. Again, any ideas or thoughts about general infrastructure should be looked at critically just because the Treasury has not indicated that that is one of the uses that can be used in the Act. However, there is water and sewer, and really generally focusing on improving the water quality and addressing water pollution. They gave a bunch of examples of projects under that category, which include improving and repairing wastewater treatment plants. I know the interim final rule does indicate dealing with lead pipe abatement. That is an issue that they have identified as something that could be addressed with these funds. And then there's also the broadband infrastructure, and that includes really getting Wi-Fi, internet access to those who are either underserved or not served at all. And the Treasury did indicate that if the funds are used to prioritize the investment in fiber optic infrastructure, because it does need to be adequate speeds if that is going to be an undertaking that this county wishes to pursue. If we can go to the next slide. Madam Chair, just a general, what would control non-point sources of pollution? I don't know what that means.
Agriculture.
Oh. Sorry. Thank you.
Leave it alone. It's a sacred cow.
Got it.
Literally.
So these projects under this, to take away from this slide, is to know that these projects are going to be big and extensive, and the Treasury understands it. And they're going to ask that the county provide public transparency on these types of projects. And specifically, that second point, to provide public transparency on whether the projects are using practices that promote on-time and on-budget delivery. The Treasury will seek information from recipients on their workforce plans and practices related to water, sewer, and broadband projects undertaken with the ARP funds. So keep that in mind, that the Treasury is going to be reviewing everything, every big project that is submitted. The Treasury did indicate that we are not allowed to submit any projects ahead of time to see if there's approval. So really, you have to go off the guidance that is given in those three items that I discussed earlier on. If you can go to the next slide, please.
Sheprow, what does it mean when it says that Treasury encourages it? I mean, is there anything specific that they're doing to encouraging it other than just saying that?
In the interim final report, they do give a lot of statistics and that sort of background information, and then they encourage, you know, they just simply say that we encourage this to be done.
And just related to that, because I've been thinking about that through this whole thing, on the continuum of administrative law, what is an interim final rule?
That's a good question.
Can we hold that, and then we can talk about that as we get through the questions?
Trouble is that it doesn't fit with what's being talked about, but that's fine.
We'll just hold that. And to your point, in my reading of it, lead pipe abatement has been encouraged, highly encouraged several times it was mentioned because of the impact it has on families and children who may have lead. So that's important. And also, the broadband infrastructure was one of those encouraged for counties to consider.
I just wondered legally what encourage meant.
That's the word that they use. So yeah, exactly. Just a plain meaning, I guess. So under this, as I described before about general infrastructure, it's generally not allowed. But as I also mentioned, it may fit under one category and not another. So when you're talking about buildings or general infrastructure, it may fit under a couple of different categories. So under Category C was that recruitment of lost revenue. That gives you the broadest range of use of funds. So you may be able to spend money under that category for general infrastructure as it goes to maintenance of infrastructure or pay-go spending for building of new infrastructure. Also, look at it under Category A, if you're responding to a public, a specific pandemic-related issue. So if it's a building that's dealing with vaccination, then yes, of course, you could use the general infrastructure for that because you're responding to a specific COVID-19 issue. So generally, infrastructure, they shy away from, but there are a couple of different ways that you could fall under these two categories for infrastructure outside of water, sewer, and broadband projects. Next slide, please. Restrictions. So the interim final rule does have two specific restrictions. The county may not use the funds either directly or indirectly offset a reduction in net tax revenue resulting from a change in law, regulation, or administrative interpretation during the covered period that reduces any tax or delays the imposition of any tax or tax increase. And then the second is the county is prohibited from using the funds to deposit into any pension fund. So those are two specific restrictions that they have outlined in the interim final rule. And then, next slide. Thank you. So when it comes to reporting, there's going to be three different types of reporting. The interim report is the first, and it's a one-time report concerning the status of expenditures as of July 31 of 2021. So in that report, it's going to look at from the date of award of funds to July 31 of 2021. And it's based on expenditures, and this report has expenditure categories, and you'd go through each category and pretty much list your expenditure under that category. The second is a project and expenditure report, and those are reports on projects funded, expenditures, and contracts over $50,000, and any other information. Those are going to be done quarterly, and the first one is due October 31 of 2021. And then the last one is the Recovery Plan Performance Report. This is an annual report, but also due on August 31 of 2021. And then after that, it's annually and due on July 31. And that's to provide information on projects that are done with the ARP funds and how Kane County plans to ensure program outcomes are achieved in effective, efficient, and equitable manner. So what to keep in mind when it comes to reporting is that date of award for that first interim report to July 31 of 2021, and then it's due that next month. So right after July 31 of 2021, you have about a month to get that report submitted, which is, I believe, just submitted on their website. And as you can tell, there's going to be a lot of reporting and things that go along with the project management of all of this. And so the American Rescue Plan Act funds can be used for administrative costs. So may Kane County use funds to cover the costs associated with managing and administering the funds? And the answer is yes. The Treasury has indicated that Kane County may use funds to administer these, including payroll and benefits for employees and cost of consultants to support effective management oversight, including consultation for ensuring compliance with legal, regulatory, and other requirements. And we would recommend that a consultant be done, given such a huge undertaking with all these reports that are due and many different projects that could be submitted. Next slide, please. So what to do next? What are the next steps? So I believe there's going to be a committee meeting in July. And so some of the things to start in that committee meeting is discussion and decision-making process for administration of ARP funds and the implementation of those projects, discuss the staffing needs, and authorize RFQs, RFPs, and job postings for the ARP administration consultants and additional county staff that might be needed, given the amount of funds that we're getting. the amount of funds that we're getting. Discuss a resolution for recruitment of the 2020 lost revenue. As I indicated in that category C, there is a formula that needs to be submitted to the Treasury. So the first year that you would want to try to calculate would be year 2020. And then discuss any resolution for reimbursement of county payroll and other expenses. And again, it's from March 3, 2021 until, as of right now, June 30 of 2021. And then keep in mind those report dates that are coming up, August 31 of 2021, the interim report date, and then the recovery plan performance report, which is also due. All right, any questions now?
Yes, Mr. Martin?
I have a couple of questions here. First off, relative to the
Microphone.
Relative to the, our ability to spend money for COVID-related activities in the part of the county, we funded what we anticipated to be our COVID-related activities with last year's federal money. So, and obviously, to the degree we have more, that would, at least in my mind, qualify. But if we in fact have adequate money put aside for the anticipated expenses, then we don't, that, that's not a category we could spend money on, right?
That would be a better policy. I mean, you have the funds to go under those.
But if we've already, if we already have the money, we don't have a need.
Correct. If you don't need to spend money in that area, then.
All right, then the second thing is, one of the problems we ran into on the first distribution was that, and use aid to small business as a, as an example, what the committee intended to do with that money was to make it available to the various municipalities who are closer to their constituents, closer to the business community within their towns, and let them distribute it. We were advised by our consultants that we couldn't, that we would have audit issues if we delegated that authority to a third party. And so then we assumed, as best we could, the distribution of those monies to the, to the, to the local businesses. For example, here, lead pipe, water connections, we don't provide sewer and water, so that money's going to have to be distributed to municipalities. And the question is, can we do it safely? And without, this audit issue haunted us the first time around, because every time it seemed like the committee had a good idea, we ran into audit issues. And the, and, and, and the, I mean, I guess that's it. Oh, I know what the other one was. The, can, can, are we allowed, and let me use mental health as an example. There are a myriad of facilities in the county that provide mental health assistance. Can we give money to third parties who will be providing that service, or are we obligated to provide that service as a county?
So to answer your first question, or I guess generally both questions, you can transfer funds, yes.
And so, so I give money, I distribute money to you, okay? Who's accountable for the appropriate expenditures? The county on the hook if you, instead of spending the money on mental health, buy cars for all of your employees? Who's, who, are we on the hook for that?
Yes, the county would be responsible, since it's their funds that they are transferring to oversee the project and also report to the Treasury. So the answer would be yes.
So the answer would be, we need to do it like we did, distributed money to the municipalities where they provide us a budget. And then we have the budget approved, and once it's approved, then we distribute money.
Right. Again, the county would be the one responsible for overseeing the project and then reporting. So yes.
Ms. Silva?
Malina.
Malina, I'm so sorry. You're right, stranger.
So a couple of questions regarding the, the funds. Can we have a snapshot of other municipalities within our county that have been given funds? I know places like Aurora probably received their own funding. And then what our guidelines are for cost-sharing projects for things like sewers or lead pipes? If we're able to do a cost-share project with the municipalities who are also receiving funding?
Yeah, for the cost sharing, I could definitely look into that. I don't have a exact answer right at this moment. But in terms of finding out what other municipalities are receiving in funds, so those would be considered non-entitlement units of local government. And the way that the funds are distributed to them are actually through the state. So the Treasury gives the money to the state, and then the state distributes. So it's not, it's not as simple as looking or going to the Treasury who distributes the funds right to them. So it would be up to the state to determine whether they are distributing funds to them. So it would be a little bit more difficult. We could try to find that information out, but.
It's available. It's public knowledge. It's public knowledge.
I thought that there was a direct grant under the legislation to three municipalities.
That's correct. That's correct.
Oh, and that's been published, actually.
Yeah, that has been. I believe that some of our municipalities have received $1 million. Perhaps Batavia has, St. Charles, Geneva, and the larger ones like Aurora have gotten significantly more.
Right, so I'd like to have that snapshot of who's received what for our meeting in July, just to have an idea of what they already have to work with and what we can help.
Available from the state.
I'm sorry?
That's available from the state.
Well, we can provide that for you, absolutely. No, yes.
I had two questions, but my first question was specifically that. I've heard information that some of the municipalities in my district have received, are scheduled to receive over $700,000. And if it is available on a website someplace, can somebody just get it to us, please, so we're all working from the same page? And then Jared, my question might be premature at best, but when we started with the other committee, I agree with, with John that we were all concerned about this audit process. Has any of that begun? Do we have any feedback like, yay, we did a really good job, or oh, we weren't quite on the mark? Where do we stand on that at all as we go into the next round?
I'll let Ms. Nierman answer that.
Tell us we did really good.
That process has not started yet.
There we go. Okay.
Not even sure the final rules have been issued yet on the audit process. We were waiting for those.
Okay, thank you.
We still have some monies left to spend, a small amount of monies left to spend under the CARES Act.
Michelle, is that something that we don't expect that to happen for, like, don't hold your breath, it's, you know, it'll be five years out? Or is that, I mean, just set expectations, just?
No, we would hope to wrap up audit responsibilities by the end of the year.
Oh, really? Okay, thank you so much.
And just to follow up with the auditing, it, okay. Oh, Fabiola's online. Why doesn't she finish the response? Fabiola, please.
Oh, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Yes, I wanted to echo what Michelle had just commented on. It's, it's a process that we're working through, but so far, what we have submitted has been, we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's, so we've, we've done a good job so far.
And then as a follow-up, as we take a look at our own expenditures that are reimbursable, that has to also be audited. So they will only accept an audited report for those expenditures, and then we can reimburse ourselves. So it's going to be the same paper trail. Yes, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got a question for you. Maybe I misunderstood during your presentation, but did you mention that we cannot send in pre-project forms for approval?
Correct.
So we just have to follow the guidelines, hopefully, that we're doing everything correctly, and then after the fact, we'll find out if we did or did not.
Yes, that's what the Treasury has indicated. That's why recommendation for using administrative cost for a consultant that deals with this type of issues would be very helpful, not just given the big projects that could be in the reporting, but also for the compliance.
Thank you.
Mr. Frost?
Frost speaking. You had touched on it briefly in your presentation. Is there a possible mechanism by which we could spend some of these funds on a building project?
Yes, so the answer is yes, but it would have to fit under one of those specific categories. So just keep in mind, the Treasury has indicated that general infrastructure is not really accepted, but if you can fit it under one of those two categories, you would be able to, to do that.
Okay, and the two categories were?
So it was a recruitment of revenue, which is going towards government services, and then the second one is responding to a specific need. So like, the example I gave was, if you got, you had a building, and that building was used for vaccinations or that sort of thing, responding to a specific COVID-19 issue, then yes, you could use general infrastructure.
And then as a follow-up, is there a spend-by provision, like this money has to be spent by within a year or two years, or?
So the, it's by December 31 of 2024, you have to have all the money allocated. Exactly. Your project's.
Spent or allocated?
Allocated.
So your project doesn't have to be done by then, but your expenses have to be obligated by that date.
Okay, and then if you don't mind while I get off the floor. So will you personally be working with the committee as our advisor?
I can assist, yeah, with what I.
So if we have questions or comments, or?
If, if needed.
Legal support, legal support only. The State's Attorney's Office will be providing advice to the committee and the county board. Vince is, Vince and Megan are both going to be assigned to be primary legal contacts. Megan's going to take the contracts portion of it, and Vince will take, you know, the other miscellaneous portions. I'll always be available, and Erin Brady will always be available as well to help answer those legal questions. In terms of administrative support, we are recommending that consultants or county staff position be hired to do that. That was one very important lesson I think we learned from CARES Act, is we really need additional staffing. I think especially if we're talking about infrastructure programs, et cetera, it's going to be really important to have someone here on site that can, can do a lot of basically grant administration work. There are consultants such as KEB, whom we used last time, that do sort of have the extra staffing that can be thrown at grant administration types of projects in addition to fulfilling the financial and auditing components as well.
Okay, and then just lastly, can we be sure that the PowerPoint is available to us? Because it'd be nice to be able to refer back to that, probably save us.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that that gets distributed via email to everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And if I can remind the board, had Jane send you, was it yesterday, from NACO, a report specifically for counties on how the money should be spent and stewed? I would suggest that you print that and use that and refer to that, because that will go into much more detail than the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint is a fantastic outline, but if you want to know specific details to reference, I would highly suggest that you refer back to that document. So make sure you bookmark it. You'll find it to be very useful.
Yeah, a lot of other questions?
Mr. Shepura, the Mr. Davos, and I think, were there any other questions over there?
I was actually going to mention that Ms. Bates had a question earlier, and I didn't know if it got answered.
It was about payroll being retroactive.
And I think was that answered appropriately?
I know the interim final rule does have some exceptions that I'll have to look into, but generally, the costs you're looking at are between March 3 of 2021 and December 31 of 2024. But I'll have to take a look more specifically as it relates to the payroll.
It would be retroactive only to March of this year.
Correct.
And not retroactive to some other.
And that's what I got to just double check on, if it's past that date, because I thought there was some provision in the interim final rule that talked about that, but generally, yeah, back to March 3.
But we are able to accept loss revenue, and perhaps Joe, Mr. Jones, that can help us with that, from, starting from 2020, correct?
Correct. That's how the formula is calculated in determining the loss of revenue.
Okay, and that would go from January from 2020 to December 31 of 2020, and it's on an annual basis?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Davos?
Hi, thank you. Vince, back to what Mr. Frost had brought up, I think, I think we're on the same wavelength there. Would a, a capital project have to be standalone within the category that qualifies? Or can a portion of, you know, can it be, you know, prorated and have a portion of the project qualify?
I would answer that whatever funds are being used to purchase or whatever, that you be able to justify in one of those two categories. I understand where you're going. And it's, I would have to do some more research if you, on that specifically, but whatever money you receive has to go into those two categories. Otherwise, the Treasury will ask for recruitment.
Sure.
And then, and then the one last thing that perhaps you did not cover, as we go through this final reporting and present that report to the Treasury on August 31, that has, also has to be documented and to be put up on our, the front page of our website so that the community, all of our citizens, have an accounting of where our expenses are and what we're planning on spending this money on. So that is a requirement of this, and this is unique, because that was not required under the CARES Act. So we will be carefully, carefully monitored.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Frost.
Question. Vincent, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I, the document that Madam Chair referred to that just got sent out, I read through it, and maybe I'm mistaken on this, but aren't the infrastructure projects that are a possibility for being reimbursed or paid for, wasn't there some stipulation in there that they had to have been planned prior a certain date that they can't be something that we now say, hey, let's take a look at doing this and get that paid for out of these funds?
I'll take a look at that. I didn't see that specifically in my review, but I will review that to see if that has to be already planned.
Okay. And the other, I, just a quick question. I think the officer that we've got sitting at the front door to make sure that people checked their temperature and for quite some time monitored how many people were coming in and wearing their face mask, his payroll would be reimbursable, correct?
As long as it's dedicated to the COVID-19 response, yes. And it, once those funds are used up, then they're used up.
Right, thank you.
As long as it meets the guidelines.
I'm sorry?
As long as it meets the guidelines of the timeframes. Mr. Shepura?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because I have a series of questions. Do I understand that the recruitment of revenue, we can't just say, we're taking this money because we lost $1 million, and that's recoupment? Is that what it, I understand you to be saying is that projects which will generate revenue that will recoup what we lost, that's the way that you recoup revenue? You can't just write yourself a check for what you think the lost revenue is?
Correct. So the Treasury has issued a formula to determine what is lost revenue. And if, under this formula, you come up with, let's say, $5 million that was lost revenue, it is considered to be due to the pandemic. So then you can use that capped money at $5 million for government services how you see fit. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, all right. I mean, it doesn't have to be a new project. You can use it to cover money that you previously, well, but it would have to relate to revenue and not just expense, right?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't have to be a new project. It can be towards current.
I guess I'd go back to my question about what exactly is an interim final regulation? And I think I didn't take administrative law in law school, so I'm not really up on that, but I understand. But I understand just looking at the way the state of Illinois does it, there are all these gradations and interim sometimes means interim for the next 20 years and sometimes it means for the next 10 days.
And I understand your question and I agree with it. I don't, I don't know why they chose to, because yes, it's an interim final rule, so it seems to be.
I mean, some of the things you've said indicate that they are going to audit for additional guidance or regulations.
So, so under federal law, your agencies are given this opportunity to issue interim final rules and skip over. Federal rules in general are, have a more elaborate rulemaking process. But in some cases, the practical nature of the matter doesn't allow for that extended rulemaking process. So in this case, you know, governments were given this money and they need to know how to spend it right away. So the Treasury then issues this interim final rule. It has the force of law, it is, it is enforceable. However, they're also given the option of, hey, we might need to change this at some point. So in this particular case, there's a comment period that ends July 16th. And after that, if they base, if they got, if they receive important public comments that indicate that they need to make some changes to the rules, they'll make the changes to the rule. That happened with the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act in terms of, you know, the family leave, et cetera. Sometimes you'll get court decisions that will weigh in and they will change the rule.
So the comment period you said ends July?
By 16.
I think we ought to consider submitting a comment that addresses some of the questions that were asked about why can't we get some preapproval? The notion that you're playing this game of, well, submit it and hope that it's okay does not strike me as helping anybody. I, would be one comment I would make.
I think the practical nature of that is that the Treasury is not going to be able to respond to every municipality, county, every entity that's trying to spend this money in a timely fashion. And you're going to end up, you know, it's going to be 2024 and you haven't.
But as you know, like with EPA permits, there are categories where they can say if you meet these five criteria. And I mean, maybe it's just an argument over what level of detail, but it just seems to be, as we've all alluded to, what do we do? I mean, it's our risk if we're wrong and that limits what we can do. I guess I have another related, okay, so on slide 13, I think one of the indicated uses was that it could be used for police and fire. Now, and then that goes to my next question. The municipalities all receive legislatively allocations for them, which they presumably have to follow the guidelines for them. But as we learned during the CARES Act process, the vast majority of the citizens in Kane County are not protected by municipal fire departments, they are protected by fire protection districts, which didn't get any allocation. And so my question would be, is it theoretically possible for the county to devote some of that money to assist fire protection districts? Or is that also something where maybe somebody ought to go back to the Congress and say, you left out a very important aspect of people that need money? And, you know, again, the municipalities generally are not going to allocate that money to the fire districts because in some cases they're not part of them and other cases they have other uses for the money. And that seems to be to be a potential big hole since they are the ones that have a lot of these expenditures.
So generally it does provide for fire. I'll have to look into specifically for fire districts as it relates to the interim final rule.
And when you had the list of the interim reports that were due, I think it said the first one is August 31st with expenditures by July 31st. And I think perhaps Commissioner Sergeus or somebody asked, does that mean that if you, anything that, is there a time cutoff? So if you haven't expended money on pre-July 31st, are you precluded from doing that later as part of a plan? Does it cut off the timeline?
No, I don't, I don't believe so from what I've reviewed. But they do want to be aware of any expenditures you've made by the time of the award to July 31st of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
And one more question and then I think we need to go to Mr. Onsek.
May I? Is it, so my understanding is that this is not an infrastructure grant. This is intended not for infrastructure unless it's related to water, sewer and broadband, correct?
Correct, the, there is a specific category for water, sewer and broadband. And when it comes to general infrastructure, they said, the Treasury has indicated that it's not for general infrastructure. But they do give flexibility if it fits into one of those two categories.
COVID category.
Yeah, the two categories I mentioned before, yes, which is one responding to a specific COVID-19 related issue.
So no bridges and roads?
Nope. People.
You can use it for roads, but it has to again fit under one of those provisions.
Road to the hospital.
But generally, no.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, my comment Sanchez here. I've been telling people that the guiding term, the guiding principle of this act is infrastructure, but not necessarily physical infrastructure, it's more a principle. What can we do that make this money last longer than this time period of, you know, two to four years? Things that instead of where the CARES Act was more about emergency relief, short term, you know, get some money out into the community, help people, this is long-term thinking.
But not roads and bridges?
Not roads and bridges, no, sorry Drew.
And the one thing that was not mentioned in this is workforce development. There has been a lot of loss of jobs. We do know that because of lack of adequate childcare, that many families have either opted to have one family earner or, or people may have had to stay home. But the propensity of women have had to, this data shows, have had to give up their, their job to take care of children or grandchildren. So instances of childcare support for workforce development can be one of those things as far as infrastructure goes, because it is about workforce development, can be considered. So that, that kind of infrastructure is allowed, as is job training opportunities and apprenticeships and educational opportunities as well to, for, to guide the laid off individuals to be able to go back to work for new job skills. So that, that's a part of the infrastructure.
Madam Chair, one final?
Yes, hold on.
Which, which brings me back to my original question. The, the, we apparently can, and Mr. Onsek will do this, get, arrive at some kind of an arithmetic entitlement to the county. Okay, there are some, the formula will be applied and we will know what happens. But what it sounds to me, based upon the fact that we already have received significant funds for expenses and our revenues are, you know, beginning to approach where they were, is that we're going to end up needing to spend this money, distribute in ways that, and you mentioned job programs and all this other stuff. It seems like we're going to have to deal with third parties who are qualified and do this. Similar to what we did when we got that last, that last shot from the state, what was it? I forget the dollar, 15 million bucks? We didn't have.
The rent release, the rent release.
Yeah, and rent relief, we didn't have the capacity to administer it. And I, I, so when we talk about community input and those types of things, what we may be soliciting more than, it may be, I run a mental health clinic in Elburn and, you know, where we, this, the third parties, I guess, is what we're, who were, unless I'm alone in the thought, I don't want the county to start trying to put together job programs and, and that kind of stuff. I think it's beyond our capacity. But then what we're talking about is screening the various social service providers because, and I, and I got a text from Jody Walnick when I said we don't provide sewer and water and she said, we have wells all over the county that have high lead content. So, so, you know, we do have, we do have legitimate county expenditures that fit, you know, fit the, fit the, the, the protocols here. But the, we're going to have, we're going to have to be leaning a lot on third parties to, to do this or we'll go, we'll never get the money distributed.
Okay, good comment, yes.
One question that I think I know the answer to, but I just want to hear it out loud and then a statement. In the first go around, there was a notion that we really had to fight to get that 65-45 split to our municipal counterparts. There is no requirement here, this is our money, correct?
Yes, yes, for the county.
That, that notion in the first round does not exist here.
$103 million in.
County, there's no looking to split that. And then the second thing, Madam Chair, you just made a comment that is just so in tune right now. I sat in business meetings most of the morning and the biggest struggle that, that I've, I heard coming out of those meetings was that there are those group of employees that almost bear a jealousy to those groups of employees that are struggling to work from home. Why do they get to work from home when we don't? And the answer was very simple in my, in my observation. Those people working from home are struggling with childcare needs that we don't have an answer for yet. Now, everybody would like to thump their chest and say, hey, we're going to have an answer by September. But if your answer is that you're planning the children to go to school so that you can come back and work in the office, school doesn't go until six o'clock at night when you're required to be here at your job. And, and I fear that as a society, we are kicking a can down the road because none of us are informed enough to answer this. And your statement about the childcare needs of the workforce right now is probably the most real thing that I'm encountering on a daily basis. And I just want, that every family, man, woman, grandparents, aunts, uncles, everybody is rolling up their sleeves trying to make this happen. Nobody understands the rules or ramifications. And I am truly nervous that when school starts, people are going to view that as we found our solution. And that I will suggest to you is not a, it's a great Band-Aid, but it's not a solution. And, and we need to continue to address that.
Thank you, thank you. If there's no other comments, Mr. Onsek?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I had prepared a presentation for you that would help give you an idea of what the estimated reimbursements would be. So just need a moment for that to come up. But while we're waiting for that, I know the topic of whether or not we've already been subject to an audit for the CARES Act funds, if we've already underwent that. And no, we haven't in terms of the U.S. Department of Treasury. But we did receive an audit of those funds by our, our regular auditors, Baker Tilly. And it was included in the audit of our federal awards, like they audit all of our federal awards. And no fund, no findings was the result of that audit. So in other words, from their perspective and looking at it, everything was done appropriately. So that's encouraging to know going forward when we will undergo the audit by the U.S. Department of Treasury. Okay, so this is my presentation, hopefully this will work, there we go. Okay, I started out by estimating the lost revenue for 2020 and they give you a very specific formula. You start with the revenue, the eligible revenue from fiscal year 2019. That, and this eligible revenue, basically it excludes your federal grants. So any federal grant funding is excluded from the revenue figures that we'll be using and comparing. Also excluded would be any of the revenue or funding that goes into the agency funds. And then there's also a few specific categories. For example, if you, we received any bond proceeds, that revenue is not included. But pretty much everything else is. And so for 2019, the base revenue that we start with to compare to is 180,828,000. They then allow you to increase that by 4.1, by the greater of 4.1% or what your track record on the previous last three years has been in terms of revenue growth. Over the last three years, prior to 2019, our revenue growth for those three years is about 3.2%. So we're allowed to use their standard increase of 4.1%. So you take 2019 at 4.1%, that's at 7,413,000. So the base revenue, including the 4.1% increase, is 188 million. That's what we compare our 2020 actual revenue to, to determine the revenue loss. So our actual revenue for 2020 is 18812,000. That tells us that their estimated lost revenue for 2020 is 7,431,000. Did I say that right? Now, just one little tidbit of information here. We do not have the ability to calculate revenue, I should say, very easily as of December 31st. We, we're, so what this comparison is, is our fiscal year end, which is as of November 30th. In order to calculate revenue as of December 31st, which is what they're, they're indicating we need to do, it's basically like closing our fiscal year a second time as of December 31st, which is a tremendous amount of work in terms of doing accruals, reconciliations. It would take a team of people to do that. So I talked to Baker Tilly, our auditor, and they agree that that is a tremendous amount of work to do it that way. So they, they believe that by just comparing our fiscal years, which ends on November 30th, is close enough to December 31st to be acceptable. Of course, we'll have to see how this plays out. I mean, it may turn out that as we move along, that they absolutely insist upon a December 31st cutoff, in which case then we're going to have to put in all the time and effort into calculating it. But for now, what we can do and what I have done is just compare the fiscal years. So based on the fiscal year comparison, lost revenue for 2020 is 7,431,000. Looking ahead, this is where it becomes very difficult. Now we're trying to project out lost revenue. So we're projecting out what we think our revenue is going to be in fiscal year '21, '22 and '23. And then compare that to the, the base year of 2019 and then add 4.1% going forward for each successive years on a compounded basis. So now we're comparing 2019 revenue plus 4.1% to bring us to 2020 and then another 4.1% to bring us to 2021. And that difference between that figure and what we're actually projecting for 2021 is $16 million. In 2022, that lost revenue projection is $17 million and in 2023, it's $22 million. Those are very large numbers and this is all based on projections. And why this is very uncertain is because this is also including grant revenue. And grant revenue can fluctuate by many millions of dollars. So these figures could change and go up or down accordingly. I then did it a second way where I just looked at. I then did it a second way, where I, I just looked at, realistically, we've never had a 4.1% increase in revenue. So if we were to just look at it realistically and use 2%, what, what would be our lost revenue under that scenario? And this is where I came with 8,400,000 for fiscal year '21, almost 5 million for fiscal year '22, and then 5.4 million for fiscal year '23. So I, basically, I'm showing you two different scenarios. So I would say this is probably on the minimum side, and then the other figures is on the maximum side. The public safety reimbursable personnel expense, I did ask Sheriff Hayne to help me with this. So what he did was he went through each of his employees in the public safety area, and quarter by quarter, he indicated which employees would have more than 50% of their time dedicated to responding to or mitigating the impact of COVID-19. So on that basis, then, I then calculated the expense of those employees. So for the first year through December 31, 2021, we have 11 million point two, or 11.2 million of expense. Next year, 7.4 million, the following year, almost a million, and then in 2024, it's another million. I did factor a 2% increase of expense, just assuming that that would be the minimum increase in terms of wages. So again, this is just an estimate, but I think it's, it's fairly close based on what we know now of what the expense will be. And this includes pension expense, health insurance expense, as well as wages. On the public health side, what we looked, looking for here is just those employees whose, who were more than 50% dedicated, or anticipated to be more than 50% dedicated to responding to COVID-19, who are not already covered under grants. Because as you know, much of the health department funding is, is from grants. So they provided these figures for me. So it's 278,000 for this year, 80,000 the next year, 82,000, and then 83,000. So these figures are not very high because most of their payroll expense is expected to be funded by grant revenue. Now, this is just a summary, then, putting all these things together. So I guess if you focused, focus on the last column, which is total. So under scenario one, where we're using, we're looking at the most revenue loss, using their 4.1%, that's almost 63 million of the 103 million that we could set aside for lost revenue. Just because we can and are allowed to doesn't mean we have to. But that would be the amount that would be allowable, assuming the projections are correct, which is a big assumption. Then, then I plugged in from there, the public safety personnel total expense of 20,600,000, the public health personnel expense of 523,000. And then also, there's the cost of the mass vaccination sites, which are a specific allowable cost for these funds. There is a resolution going to Finance Committee meeting tomorrow morning, which has this figure in it, in which it's being proposed that this amount be taken out of the American Rescue Plan funding, since it is a specifically allowable cost. So I, I added that into that, this summary as well. So that leaves us with almost 18 million of, of the funds that can be used for other items, any of those allowable uses that Vince had just presented to you. Under the other scenario, I use the lower amount of lost revenue. And that basically gives you, if you look in the total column, about 54 million, or about half of the funds that will be, yet to be determined for other uses. So depending on what other uses you have in mind, may factor in your decision as to how much to set aside for lost revenue. And then just notes, it's basically the same note on the use of lost revenue that Vince had in his presentation. And I would say that you, setting aside an amount anywhere between scenario number one and scenario number two would be recommended at this point, simply because this is simply a projection, and it could change very quickly as, as we become aware of additional grant revenue, or maybe less revenue as we move forward. So this gives you just a, an overview of what it is. I'll, I'll leave you with this one slide here to look at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sheprow.
Can we reallocate how the money is accounted for under this so that if we had used CARES Act money, and, but for that, it would be eligible for reimbursement under this program, can you move that to another category to maximize the ability to use the funds available?
We can, but it would have to be any expenses that would be incurred this fiscal year. I think last fiscal year is basically closed, but any, anything that happened this year, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Frost.
Frost speaking. So Joe, if I understand you correctly, if we, whatever, whatever of your avenues we took to come up with a, a number for lost revenue reimbursement, once that's reimbursed, those funds can be used for any legitimate government service?
Yeah, so there's, this is like step one, and then step two is, once we, we do receive the amount for lost revenues, is then to make a decision how to use those funds.
So once we reimburse ourselves for lost revenue, it's kind of back in the, in the budget and can be used for any legitimate government service?
Yes.
But not coroner's buildings.
We already got one.
So as I mentioned, the money has to go out the door. Cannot go into a rainy day fund. And it has to be expended by 2026, of the end of the year.
To, Madam Chair, to go with Mr. Frost's question. So at that point, it does not have to be a COVID-related issue? It could be more of a general fund issue, or still COVID-related?
It has to go under the jurisdiction of this funding. So it has to be for public safety, COVID relief. And some of the, some of the other issues, we could talk about childcare. One of the other things that they talked about is affordable housing, and as development for workforce. So as housing, and I'm sure, I hope some of you read the interesting article, it was in the Sunday Tribune, about the lack of affordable housing that's going to be happening nationwide. As more people are looking to move and population growth, and the increase in property values right now, if you sell your home, many people can no longer afford that, so they're looking more towards affordable apartments, which are not available. So it's, it's an interesting nationwide problem that people are going to be facing. And they're saying that use of this money for workforce development to be able to provide, not supportive housing, but that is allowed as well. But affordable housing is something that this money can also be used for. So in the, in the thought of having strong workforce development, what are, what are the needs? And this articulated very carefully in that document that I sent to you.
So I, I think I'm confused because it looks to me like general economic development and infrastructure projects such as road construction or bridge repair unrelated to COVID-19 are not an eligible expense unless funded through a county's lost revenue replacement allowance. So are we back to roads and bridges? And we just spent all our money so we can all go home?
As transportation chair, I don't see any scenario where this would go towards roads and bridges. I think when we're talking about infrastructure, it could possibly be a building.
Vince?
The only thing I could add to that is, again, there, one of the slides that we can distribute does indicate, so recruitment of lost revenue, that's the money that, the lost revenue that the county had. So if the county had that money, they could have used it how they see fit. So as long as it goes to a legitimate government service, you can, they did indicate in one of the frequently asked questions that it could go to building new infrastructure, which included roads, under that specific category. So under this presentation, if the cap is 7 million for that one year, you would have that much money of the 103 million funding to use under that category, if that makes sense. And I can follow up with more questions later, but again, it just really depends on what category you're trying to establish the use of funds for.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, I've got a question for you. In looking at your two scenarios of revenue lost, one equated to about 85 million over this period of time in lost revenue, the other one equated to about 50 million, using the 2% versus 4.1%? Is that correct? So if we take a balance of those, it's about 68 million. My question is this, whatever we come up with in lost revenue and qualify to get reimbursed for, when we get that money, whether it be 50 million, 68 million, or 85 million, can we use that money in any way we want?
Well, I would say, what I did was, on this last slide here, this is a quote from what Vince had referred to as far as a frequently asked question. So reimbursement for lost revenue must be used for provision of government services. Government services can include, but are not limited to, maintenance of infrastructure or for building new infrastructure, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity, including hardware, software, and protection of critical infrastructure. So this is, this is straight out of the frequently asked questions. So I mean, this is, this is the answer to the question. It may not be the complete answer you're looking for, but.
But it gives us a good idea that there are a number of sources we can use the lost revenue allocation for.
Yeah, so in, in this, in that sense, it's to our advantage in, in terms of flexibility to set as much aside for lost revenue that qualifies for lost revenue as possible, because then it opens the door to maybe more possibilities than we otherwise would have.
I think I see some interesting eyes going out there with transportation. Some interesting excitement in your eyes for transportation.
Not, not transportation.
I couldn't get that wall on Orchard.
That could be in play. I, I guess my, my, this is a joke, but, you know, the definition of infrastructure recently has taken on broad meaning. So if we can't spend it on infrastructure, maybe we can't spend any of it. So, that's a joke.
And affordable childcare is part of infrastructure, so.
Chairman, I believe that we need to keep in mind that the spirit of this act and this 100 million is to go towards people who are seriously affected by COVID, and to make sure that the social needs are met of the people who are still suffering from COVID, and how to rebuild our economy after that.
That's correct. It is, it is an opportunity to support a growing economy here in Kane County. So whatever we look at, we need to make sure that we always have that filter. Not, good government services is here to help our constituents, and how we reach out to our constituents to best support them for the long term, not just short-term needs, but long-term needs. This money could possibly provide that opportunity. Are there any other questions? Because we, I just want to forewarn everybody, we will be going to executive session.
The phrase, Sheprow, the phrase was used a couple of times about expenditures needing to be primarily related to COVID. And we know with the CARES Act, eventually they got around to saying that certain expenditures would be conclusively presumed to be primarily related, most notably, I think, all of like first responder payroll costs, regardless of what they actually used them for. Is there a similar definition already in the guidelines, or do we anticipate that that will make its way somewhere down the line as it did with the CARES Act?
Well, there, there is already quite a bit of specificity within, I forget, the guidelines themselves. So there, there are a number of things that are enumerated of how these could be spent. And it makes common sense when you look at the list, it's things that you would automatically assume would be covered. And it's, it's one of the many, one of the items in many of the 100 pages of guidance centered out there. So it is available.
Thank you very much, Joe, well done. As I mentioned, we will now be, have a need to go into executive session. May I please have a motion for a closed session for the purposes of discussing dismissal of a specific employee and pending litigation before an administrative tribunal?
Walniki seconds.
Walniki seconds.
Alan, aye.
Bates?
Yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Davist?
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Ford? Frost?
Yes.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Gums?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis? Martin? Molina? Sanchez?
Yes.
Sheprow?
Present.
Silva?
Yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Sergeus?
Yes.
Tepe?
Yes.
Walniki?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're back in open session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alan.
Alan Berman.
Bates here.
Berman?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Davist?
Davist here.
Ford?
Here.
Frost?
Yes.
Ichbal?
Present.
Gums?
Gums here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Kias?
Kias, present.
Kope?
Kope's here.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Lewis? Martin? Molina? Sanchez?
Sanchez here.
Sheprow?
Sheprow present.
Silva?
Silva here.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Sergeus?
Sergeus here.
Tepe?
Tepe here.
Walniki?
Present.
All right, we are now in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
We adjourn, Madam Chairman. Ease the pain.
Davos, is that you, second?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Motion is made in seconded, motion.
Aye.
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 Great evening, everybody. Motion passes.